It is six o'clock and the city council meeting for Kerrville is open. We're glad that you're all here and I believe we're going to start with an invitation and pledge. And council member Kim Clarkson is going to lead that for us. If you'll stand, please.
Go by your heads, Kim, please. Dear God, we come to you tonight with nothing but the purest of intentions to do your good work on behalf of the city and the citizens that live here and in our surrounding areas. We thank you for our public safety officials that rise to the challenge time and time again. We thank you for giving us the opportunity to support them further by giving them the facilities and the tools that they need to do their jobs. We are thankful for our supportive citizens and the community that you allow us to live and grow. And please direct us to make decisions that continue to protect the beauty of our community and allow it to grow in thoughtful ways. In your name we pray. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will have our announcements and Shelley, do you want to read in that bit of information?
Sure. Announcement of items of community interest, including expressions of thanks, congratulations, or condolences, information regarding holiday schedules, honorary recognitions of city officials, employees, or other citizens, reminders and upcoming events sponsored by the city or other entity that is scheduled to be attended by city officials or employees, announcements involving imminent threats to the public health and safety of the city. No action will be taken. And I'll go ahead and read the visitor's citizens forum information right now.
Yes, why don't you?
Any citizen with business not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the city councils prior to speaking. Each speaker must fill out the speaker request form and give it to the city secretary. The speaker request form must be submitted to the city secretary before the item is called or read into record. City council may not discuss or take any action on an item but may place the item on a future agenda. Each speaker is limited to four minutes.
Okay, thank you. Kim?
Good afternoon or good evening. I'm not going to do as good a job as Stuart Cunha does, but he's not here, so I will be taking his place. We have several things going on at the library and also in parks and recreation. Just so that you know, we had over 600 attendees at the first little summer reading program that was at the Calothe Theater, over 600 attendees. And yesterday, we had 82 kids at Storytime. So we're off to a great start. So for the kids programs, they have a rainbow fish craft, they have Storytime Lego Club, family movie on the 21st, a raptor show, which is going to be highly attended on the 22nd, and then a kid craft of shark puppets. They also have adult programs going on, Movie Chat, Shrouded in Mystery Book Club, they have an adult craft of do-it-yourself wire trees, Food for the Soul Medicare Class, Learn Everything You Want to Know About Medicare, and then the Talking Texas Book Club. And then up at the parks, upcoming parks events on June 17th, which is this weekend, they'll have concerts by the river again. And that is it. Thank you.
Thank you. Does council, anyone have anything that you would like to share? All right, we will move on to, I've got to get the right agenda here. We will move on to the presentations. And we have a proclamation recognizing June 2022 as the Great Outdoors Month in Kerrville, Texas. And so Ashley, and is there anyone joining you?
No.
All right. I don't know if our temperatures are exactly in the great outdoors time right now, but this is a proclamation that says, whereas the city of Kerrville is blessed with outstanding outdoor recreation and leisure opportunities for our citizens and visitors to enjoy while participating in safe and healthy fun with their family and friends, and whereas outdoor activity promotes a healthy body, mind, and spirit, and is touted by health organizations and medical professionals as a remedy to the adverse effects caused by lack of physical activity and too much screen time, and whereas parks and recreation encourages physical activity by providing spaces such as sports fields, hike and bike trails, lakes and rivers, swimming pools, and many other outdoor areas designed to promote active lifestyles, encouraging citizens and visitors to get outdoors, be active, play, and whereas the President of the United States has designated June as National Great Outdoors Month, the city of Kerrville, Texas, County of Kerr, recognizes the benefits derived from the city's generous inventory of outdoor parks, activities, and resources. Now, therefore, I, Judy Eichner, Mayor of the city of Kerrville, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2022 as Great Outdoors Month in Kerrville, and urge all citizens to join me in recognizing the importance and the value of parks, trails, and other outdoor amenities and activities, and further encourage citizens of Kerrville to visit area parks, rivers, and trails, and become more familiar with the parks and recreation programs and amenities available outdoors to all residents. In witness whereof, I have hereto, hereunto, set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Kerrville to be affixed this 14th day of June 2022. And we have many, many, many things to just let the world know about. And Ashley is our Parks and Rec-
Director.
Director, thank you, and has a wonderful board. Would you like to say a few words?
I think you said it well. We have a lot of great things to do in our community. We have a wonderful park system. And if you haven't received a copy of the activity guide that has all of our activities, please grab one. We're at our Parks Office, or City Hall, or online. We have a lot of fun ways to get outdoors, be active, and play.
How many are on your staff?
Total, we have approximately 50 staff.
And they do a lot of good work.
Great team.
Well, we appreciate you and your staff and your board. Thank you.
There you go.
All right.
One, two, three.
Just by, I have to be Stuart, just by you.
So yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Okay, and next, we have a meritorious award to the Kerrville Police Department Officer, Jesse Baldwin. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to allow us to recognize one of our officers who performed his duty in such a fashion that deserved extra recognition. Officer Baldwin, if I could get you to join me up here, and as you're coming, I'll tell the story of why we're here. We're awarding Officer Baldwin the KPD Life Saving Award based on a nomination from Sergeant Ed Holloway. Officer Baldwin responded on May 23rd, 2022, to the Mama Cheetos Restaurant located at 215 Junction Highway for a report of individual choking. Upon his arrival there, the individual was unresponsive on the floor, and efforts by citizens at the location were unsuccessful in clearing the airway of the female who was suffering. Officer Baldwin assessed the situation and rapidly performed a high maneuver multiple times on this individual, eventually clearing the airway and allowing the individual to breathe on their own. That lady was transported to the hospital later, and to our knowledge, she's fully recovered. Not only did Officer Baldwin do a fantastic job on that scene, but what he did after that, once he got off shift, really speaks to his heart, his true caring of the community. Once he was off shift, he went to the hospital to check on that individual, to ensure that she was well, and she was. She was breathing and alert and happy to report saved by the efforts of Officer Baldwin. And for that, we appreciate your efforts, your work, and your quick action on that scene. And with that, I would like to first present you with your life-saving bar for your uniform. Congratulations. As well as the Kerrville Police Department Life Saving Award. Congratulations.
Chief, I think we should have him introduce his family. I think they're-
Yes, Mayor.
Please.
My wife, Marissa Baldwin, seated right here in the front. This is my mother, Debbie Baldwin, and, gosh, cousins, nephews, my sister on the back row, my brother-in-law, Troy Robertson. You'll see my teammates throughout the room, and I appreciate y'all for coming. I really do.
So thank you for what you do for us.
Thank you.
Good to have all of you here. So we know you back him up every day. That's wonderful.
Mayor, we may want to get a picture with all the family if they're-
That'd be great. Yes. There's some good-looking people there.
Yeah, we all gonna fit?
You'll fit. We've done more than that.
Y'all are good.
What a great picture.
Come on more, one more, one more.
One more, one more.
One, two, three, two. Thank you.
Thank you all for being here. And you're free to go. Thank you. No, council, you have to sit. Before we start the visitors forum, are my Habitat people here? There they are. There they are. Would you guys come up to the microphone? And we have a new executive director in town. And I'd like to have her introduced, so.
Mayor, council, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Brent Hunter, and I am the current president of our Habitat for Humanity Kerr County Board of Directors. As you know, Habitat has a long history of serving deserving families with affordable housing. To be specific, since 1989, we have built 123 homes in our community. We are truly grateful for the support of our donors, volunteers, and leaders in our community. We couldn't do what we do at the scale in which we operate without a strong executive director. Our retiring executive director, Philip Stacy, has truly put God's love into action by bringing people together to build homes, communities, and hope. Kerrville's newest resident and our new leader will only accelerate the positive impact we have on our community. So it's my pleasure to introduce you to our new executive director, Mary Campana.
Mary, would you say a few words?
I'd love to. One, I just want to say thank you for allowing me to serve in the best job, not only in Texas, but across the entire country. I came from Habitat for Humanity in Austin. I promise I won't bring the weird here. And I'm here to stay, but I do have to maybe correct you. It's not the executive director, it's the community. One of the reasons that I was drawn to Kerrville, I have did a lot of due diligence, and Kerrville, Habitat for Humanity Kerr County is in the top three of the small affiliates across the country, has a very strong foundation, very strong reputation. And it's because of this community, it's because of everyone in this county and city that helps us. We simply cannot do our job without the community. So it's exciting to be able to get to know everyone and to just personally thank everyone for everything that they have done for Habitat. And I am here, I am a homeowner, and I've already fallen in love with the hills. I lost my heart to the hills.
That's great. Thank you. Thank you. We look forward to seeing you again. Okay, at this time, we will entertain visitors and do we have some?
Four Howard Oaks.
Councilmen and women, thank you so much for this opportunity. I wanted to read a quick poem by an Air Force veteran of World War II about Flag Day. It's called "Come Fly With Me." "I am proud to be the U.S. flag and fly with dignity because my freedom wasn't won without hostility. May I plead, 'Come fly with me. Look out across the sky, and if you will, I promise not to cry.' My job is flying every day for all the world to see. I represent the gallant men that all through history marched from Howard pages when the trouble did ensue. And if you knew them like I did, you'd fight the tears back too. For as they sang, 'We won't be back until it's over over there,' they planted many memories that I would like to share. I felt such pride that day at wake. I flew there for a while, was raised against tremendous odds at Iwo Jima Isle. I'd flown half-mast at places like Carrigador at Baton. Men scaled the cliffs of Normandy to bear my colors on. Pearl Harbor taught this land of ours, no liberty is free. I wept over the battlefield and know that victory is bought with sweat, blood, and tears, or traded for the slain. But I proclaimed to all the world, 'They did not die in vain.' I flew at every major front to honor Uncle Sam. Korea had its heroes too, and so did Vietnam. Marines were slain in Lebanon to raise involvement fear that if we don't fight over there, they'll bring it over here. If I could know just what it was that reared courageously to leave behind heroic deeds that carved out history. Just what it was inside of them that overcame their fear, what made them leave the home they loved and families held dear, what made these men lay down their lives to stem the tide of war, now they rest beyond the blue upon that golden shore. In the air, on land, and sea, great courage did prevail, but many names, may God forgive, were lost upon the trail. It reads unknown upon their cross. They rest beneath the sod. We may never know their names, but their names are known to God. I am very sure that God himself told every man, 'Well done,' and comforted every mother's heart who sacrificed a son. My vigilance will never end among your hollow dead who gave their very best, their lives, and then marched on ahead. I pray that someday I can fly in peace forevermore, that I will be spared the pain, the grief, the misery of war, that someday through the grace of God, the drums of war will cease, and every place on earth will dwell in everlasting peace. For every soldier I have known, may I salute you, sir, for I was there the day you fell, and know how brave you are. So I fly around the world for every soldier's sake, and wonder how much of this my broken heart can take. I'm much more than just a flag that decorates a pole. I am the faith, the hope, the love within the G.I. soul. And if every flag could really talk, here's what this flag would say: To every soldier laid to rest, come fly with me today. Thank you."
Thank you.
Katie Capes?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am Katie Capel, and I am here as a representative of the Blue Bell Community Association. On the 4th of July, we will have our third sort of annual parade. Mr. Garcia was in our parade last year, as well as the police chief. And it's for children on their bicycles decorated. We're not having any combustion engines in this thing. So I'd like to invite you all to come. Tell your friends. It's for everyone in Kerrville. I think we had 150 there last year on the 4th, on the 3rd last year. This year, it'll be Monday, the 4th of July at 9:00 in the morning, forming up at Trinity Baptist Church. And it's a great celebration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Martha Hicks?
Okay, I'm Martha Hicks. I live in North Texas. I work with Katie. I do the publicity. She's a great brains of the thing. She's the one that came up with Reviving This Parade. It's a lot of fun. And come out, kids of all ages, you don't have to be a kid to be in the parade. Just show up, and basically, a costume works best. And Jesse Baldwin was in the parade in our neighborhood when he was a kid.
And last year, they came on their bicycles to help-
He rode again. He rode again in the parade. Yeah, it was wonderful. Be able to sit here with him, meet his family. That's special. Okay, well, come out, be there. Our friends at Trinity Baptist Church are treating all the bikers or walkers, or whatever you are, to popsicles for the end. And their popsicles will be served at my house.
Thank you, ladies.
There'll be a big setup.
Thank you.
Fred Henneke?
Thank you, Mayor Eichner, and council persons. Hope you all have a copy of the handout that I had prepared and turned in along with my speaker forum request. I'm here to talk about something we don't have enough of, and that's water. We actually live in a semi-arid climate, according to the National Geological Association, regularly prone to droughts. We're in one now. Some statistics I pulled out of different sources, as of today, Kerrville had received officially 3.29 inches of rain through May 31st. The annual average for May 31st is 12.09. We are 8.80 inches below the average today, and got very little in May, one of our wettest months. In my house, I didn't get anywhere near 3.29 inches of rain so far. Another statistic, and I think one that's even more striking to me, is that the flow in the Guadalupe River today is 4.4 CFS, cubic feet per second. The average, long-term average for today is 75 cubic feet per second. That's a huge drop. And according to the paper and the water plan, Kerrville gets 80% of its water from the surface, 20% from underground. Those statistics threaten both of those sources. Water is critical. We can make houses. We can make concrete. We can make highways. We can't make water. We have to learn to live where we are, in the environment we're in. And that includes allowances for fluctuations in water. I mean, I see some of my friends around up in the dais who lived through the drought of 2011. According to the paper, the water conditions today are worse than they were in 2011. And 2011 is the drought of record in Kerr County. What are we facing? We don't know what we're facing, because it doesn't come all of a sudden. But the city of Kerrville is not immune from this because, according to the South Texas Water Master, they could curtail our use of water, surface water, if necessary. There are certain flow requirements for our permit. We're lucky enough to have one very senior permit, but we also have one junior permit that's subject to being curtailed or even replaced by more senior permits. This really comes to my mind because of a particular development out between the State Park and Comanche Trace. The developers' plan proposes to have 1,600 housing units in that area. Conservatively, I'd say that's 3,500 people. That's probably real conservative, probably close to 4,000. To add 3,500 people into Kerrville today would increase the population by 14%. Do we have the resources to support that increase? And that's just one development. I'm sure Mr. Paxton could detail numerous other developments. I don't know how many housing units we come up with. But it, you know, we can't make water. We have to live with what we have, and we have to grow smart, not dumb, not like me. Grow smart. We have to have a water plan, and I have not studied the current water plan. I apologize for that, probably should have. But we have to have a water plan that takes-
Your timer has finished.
Oh. We need to take in consideration droughts on the long term, and what can we sustain? Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Henneke.
Thank you.
And that's the end of the speakers.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hoppy, I think we're going to have a workshop on water in the very near future, yes?
We are. And that workshop is related really to water and wastewater infrastructure. However, it's a good point that you make up, and it was referenced in the comments. We do have a long-range water supply plan. The city actually completed a 100-year water supply plan just a couple of years ago. It is referenced on our website, and it does talk about the firm water supply, which that percentage that was referenced is actually, it fluctuates based off of what the water resources are in the surface, in the river. And so sometimes that's 80%, sometimes it's 0%. Because we are experiencing drought-like conditions on surface water right now, we are shifting more towards underground resources, and in fact, offer for storage and recovery, which the city has been very proactive on, as you well know, created 35 years ago. It was the first one in the state of Texas to do it. We store under a billion gallons of water in basically our underground lake. And so this community has been very proactive in regards to water supply management. There's a ton of data and information in that long-range water supply plan, and it does project for future growth, so.
Okay, thank you. All right, at this time, we will consider the consent agenda. And Shelley, if you'll-
Been polled by the visitors or citizens.
All right. Council, does anyone have any item that they feel needs to be pulled? These are all agreements that happen every year.
4A.
4A. Okay.
May I make a motion that we approve consent agenda items 4A through 4H?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. And a Roman, 4I.
Yes, second page. The time of adjournment being corrected from 4:00 to 3:47.
All right. Anything else?
No, ma'am. I'll move to approve the minutes of our workshop held on June 2nd, 2022, by correcting the time of adjournment from 4:00 p.m. to 3:47.
All right. And do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, right hand, please. And it is approved. All right. And we will move to 5A, the first of our public hearings. And Shelley, if you'll read that in for us.
Resolution number 28-2022, a resolution granting a conditional use permit to authorize short-term rental unit on the property consisting approximately 3.015 acres, being out of the Martinez survey number 124, abstract 247, more commonly known as 1979 Arcadia Loop South. Said property is located within a medium-density residential zoning district R2, and making said permit subject to conditions and restrictions. There are no citizen speakers signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
All right.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a short-term rental unit down on Arcadia Loop, 1979 Arcadia Loop. There's the map showing the other adjacent properties. There are three other short terminals on Arcadia Loop existing. And here's the identification of the property and showing where they have existing gravel parking. And here's the identification of the property and showing where they have existing gravel parking. And this is consistent with the comprehensive plan because again, it's not a change in zoning, but just that conditional use permit. And on May twelfth, Planning and Zoning Commission recommended the case with unanimous vote. If you'd please answer any questions.
All right, Council, any questions at this point in time? Is the owner here?
Yes.
Okay. Would you like to come to the mic and say a few words? Maybe answer a question?
I'll answer a question, I'll say something if I. I'm not sure what to say. If you want to introduce yourself.
Thank you. One question I have, are you, are you living on, you're not living on the property?
No, ma'am, I live three houses down.
Okay, so you will be close and be there to take care of any issues that may arise?
Yes, ma'am. We're also going to have a management company, so it'll be managed by myself and my wife along with a management company.
Okay. And have you visited with your neighbors? Are they all aware of, of what you're intending to do?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. All right, anyone, any, any questions for him? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'm sorry, yes, I forgot, I told you I'd forget. We will open the public hearing at six thirty-one. And we will close the public hearing at six thirty-one. Now, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number twenty-eight dash twenty twenty-two. And do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. And it is approved, all right, thank you. All right, five B. Shelley?
Resolution number twenty-nine dash twenty twenty-two, a resolution granting a conditional use permit to authorize a short-term rental unit on the property consisting of lot four, block fourteen, Westland Edition, more commonly known as four oh eight Lois. Said property is located within a single-family residential with accessory dwelling unit zoning district R one A and making said permit subject to conditions and restrictions. There are no citizen speakers signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
All right, Drew?
Yes, this is another short-term rental unit at four oh eight Lois. And there's the map showing the adjacent properties. There is one other on Lois Street, oh, excuse me, not Lois Street, Lucille. And that's the closest in the neighborhood. And they do have room for three parking spaces as required along the side of the house. Planning and Zoning Commission approved it with unanimous vote on May twelfth. If you'd please answer any questions.
All right, Council, any questions for Drew? Is the owner here?
Yes, ma'am.
Would she? We've seen you before. All right, would you like to say a few words? Tell us who you are and.
Carrie Wilt, we live at three nine eight K Springs Drive in Hunt. And this is our fourth vacation rental permit request, as with the other ones, we meet all the requirements. This one, different from the rest, typically we bring you a house that's almost done and ready to go. This one, we decided to make sure we had the permit in hand before we made the investment in the property. So if you've driven by, actually even a week ago, it looked a lot worse. Today, it's actually a pretty bright shining star, it got paint and it's amazing what paint will do. But, so we will be slowly working on it to bring it up to where it needs to be for our vacation rental.
And have you talked with all of your neighbors, Carrie?
They've all been notified through this process, yes.
Any questions for Carrie? All right.
So can you confirm or clarify where the three parking spaces were? It's a little difficult when I drove by.
Sure, yeah, no problem. You can fit one in the garage and then two in the driveway to the right, back, back to each other.
Okay, gotcha. Okay. That works.
You're welcome.
Thank you. At this time, at six thirty-four, we will open a public hearing. At six thirty-four, we will close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
I'll move that we approve resolution number twenty-nine dash twenty twenty-two.
We have a second?
Second.
And everyone in.
I'm in favor of it there.
In favor, yes, please raise your right hand. Thank you. It is approved, all right. Okay, you're gonna be with us for a while, Drew, right? All right, Shelley?
Resolution number thirty-dash twenty twenty-two, a resolution granting a conditional use permit to authorize a short-term rental unit on the property consisting of lot ten, block three, Starkey Manor seven addition, more commonly known as six oh four Mockingbird. Said property is located within a single-family residential zoning district R one and making said permit subject to conditions and restrictions. There are no citizen speakers signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
Drew?
Thank you. Short-term rental at six oh four Mockingbird. Here's the map. And I cannot see any of the dots from here. I don't believe there are any in this immediate neighborhood. There are a few in Methodist Encampment. Of course, this neighborhood does not connect to Methodist Encampment. And they do have, as you can see, the garage, parking, and there is actually another additional side parking space to that driveway. And on May twelfth, this was approved with a five-one vote from the planning commission.
Is the owner here? Okay, it does not look like they are. Drew, do you know who, who will be called for, if someone needed to be?
If I'm not mistaken, they said they're gonna use a local management company. The house is in the family and no one in the family is prepared to, or ready to move to Kerrville just yet, so they wanted to rent it out until then.
I was able to hear the mayor and planning and zoning commission meeting and the, and the owner was there. And in this situation, what they were saying was they planned to utilize it for a short period of time, maybe a year. They anticipate having a family member moving. They're just making that transition right now, so they want to keep the property in use and generating income in the short term.
Okay. Okay. All right, at this time, at six thirty-seven, we'll open the public hearing. And at six thirty-seven, we will close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
Which one is it?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number three zero dash twenty twenty-two.
Second?
I'll second.
And everyone in favor, raise your right hand please. And it is approved. All right, Shelley. Five D.
Resolution number thirty-one dash twenty twenty-two, a resolution granting a conditional use permit to authorize a short-term rental unit on the property comprising part of lots fourteen and fifteen, block two, Hill Crest Edition, more commonly known as nine fifty-six Murda. Said property is located within a single-family residential zoning district R one and making said permit subject to conditions and restrictions. There are no citizen speakers signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
Drew?
Another short-term rental at nine fifty-six Murda. And there are a few in the neighborhood along Tyvee, Prescott and Robinson, just in the immediate area. And this is zoned R one and it is a two-bedroom house requiring three parking spaces. And they've indicated they have room for five parking spaces with that garage towards the rear of the property and the long driveway down the side of the property. And planning commission approved it May twelfth with a five-one vote.
All right, is the owner here? Would you like to step to the microphone, sir? Tell us who you are.
My name's Omario Agudel Junior and I'm not the owner, but I represent the vacationist, the locally-owned management company. And also the, the owners are also locally from Kerrville. They will be here, there will always be somebody around and available to take care of any problems that might come up.
Have they notified all their neighbors?
Yes, ma'am.
They have, all right. Any questions for him, Council?
I have one. It says in, in the, the one and only opposition letter that I received that this resident feels like you almost share a driveway with them. Can you explain that?
There are two driveways, the two driveways neighbors, one right next to the other, but they don't share the driveway, there's two separate spots.
Okay.
Is the, I think, is the concerned citizen here?
But we need to open this public.
When we open the public hearing.
We'll do that. Any other questions directly to this gentleman? All right, at six, thank you, sir. At six thirty-nine, we will open the public hearing. And do we have someone who would like to speak?
My name is Michelle McGinnis and I'm the next door neighbor and the, correct, driveways are right next to each other. It's just very close, very, very close. And so my concern is, and I did talk with Carrie Wilt, so she told me a little bit, but is, you know, like a background check or something. So my question is to you, I mean, do you do that? Cause I know she does Airbnb and has had them canceled if, if the background check doesn't come back. So with it being so close and, you know, single, it's, you know, I just want to make sure that there's safety and all that kind of stuff and. Okay, but are there background checks? Like, do you use a company that does?
Let me get the bike, I can call the owners right now. Unfortunately, they're drought-aided, it'll be in Kerrville right now.
Okay.
Emergency came up, but I can't call them immediately, they're, they're watching, actually, they're monitoring right now.
Cause I know the Wilt's go through Airbnb, so they have a big corporation that does a lot of background.
Yes, they do.
Things, and so this is independent, so that's.
Or this, they're actually both through Airbnb and booking and all the other.
Okay, so you do go through all that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
All right.
That's my concern.
Does that satisfy your concern? Okay.
Okay. Have they given you a phone number, as, as a neighbor? Have they given you a phone number of someone?
I will get that.
Okay, all right, and will the owners?
Just in case.
So that's, that's good, so.
Do you, do you mind if I take a little personal liberty and just kind of?
No, let, let's, you want me to close this or do it during that?
It doesn't matter, actually.
We'll close the public hearing at six forty-one and go ahead.
Michelle, and, and probably many of you who are interested in this issue know that we have had a recent meeting with the Planning and Zoning Commission to talk about ways that we will continue to consider these issues. One of those, Michelle, that came up is an annual licensing process to allow for the homes to be inspected. That hasn't happened yet, this is just a workshopping, but just to let you know that, that the concerns that we're hearing, we're looking at ways within our, within our, within our ability to mitigate things that we feel like could be problematic and to protect the neighborhoods as well as, you know, respecting private property owners and what their rights are as well. So it is something that all of Council, Planning and Zoning takes very seriously and understands. So we want to protect you and as a neighbor.
And that's one of the reasons we're encouraging owners to give the neighbors their phone numbers so that if something needs to be told to them, you've got a way to contact them. So, all right, all right, thank you. All right, do we have a motion?
Oh, sure.
Yes, anyone?
I'll move that we approve resolution number thirty-one dash twenty twenty-two.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, raise your right hand please. And it is approved.
Thirty-one. I believe that, that was what was on the screen, is that correct?
Yes.
Thirty-one dash twenty twenty-two. Actually, the screen says.
Sorry, I jumped ahead.
And we're on five E.
All right, Shelley, you're okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, if you will go ahead now with thirty-two dash twenty twenty-two.
Resolution number thirty-two dash twenty twenty-two, a resolution granting a conditional use permit to authorize a short-term rental unit on the property comprising part of lots five and block seven, Hill Crest Edition, more commonly known as nine sixteen Prescott. Said property is located within a single-family residential zoning district R one and making said permit subject to conditions and restrictions. There are no citizen speakers, how, this is a public hearing.
All right, Drew?
This is another short-term rental at nine sixteen Prescott, just a couple of blocks from the previous one. Here's same map showing the location of the pending and approved short-term rentals. And here's the property. Again, they do have the garage and a large driveway. Accommodate the minimum five parking spaces required for the four-bedroom house. And on May twelfth, the planning commission approved it with a five-one vote.
All right, is the owner here?
Yes.
All right, would you like to say a few words, sir?
My name is Vince Leiporn, so we are the owners. Not sure what to say. So, yes, we'll be managing, we have lots, or we've already established multiple contacts within Kerrville to help us. And I have also spoken, tried to reach all the neighbors, but those that I've reached, I've talked with as well as exchanged numbers with.
I was gonna ask if you've done phone numbers.
Next to me, yes.
Okay. Council, any questions for him? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And at this, at six forty-five, we will open the public hearing. Do we have anyone to speak? Did anyone sign up, Shelley?
No, sir, no ma'am.
And we have no one here to say anything. All right, we did have a letter in opposition and I believe the owner has seen that and has responded to that, so. And you have reached out and I hope spoken directly with him?
I have not visited the home.
Thank you.
The home of, of the person who sent the letter in is still under construction, so he has not.
Oh, I see. Oh, okay, all right. All right, all right. Yes, I would recommend as soon as you can, find a way to connect with him, if, if you can. All right. Did I close the public hea, I need to close it. Did I open it?
You did.
Okay. At six forty-six, we will close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution thirty-two dash twenty twenty-two.
Do we have a second?
Second.
And all in favor, right hand please? All right, it is approved. All right, we have one more, Shelley?
Resolution number thirty-three dash twenty twenty-two, a resolution granting a conditional use permit to authorize a short-term rental unit on the property comprising part of lot twelve, block one, River Hill Las Casitas Edition, more commonly known as two twenty River Hill Club Lane number twelve. Said property is located within a medium-density residential zoning district R two and making said permit subject to conditions and restrictions. There are no citizen speakers signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
One more time, Drew?
One more. This is at two twenty River, River Hill Club Lane, excuse me, number twelve. This property actually was a grandfathered short-term rental unit. Previous owner quit renting it and the new owner wants to come back and do the same thing. So brought forward the conditional use permit.
All right, is the owner here for a chance? Okay, would you like to step to the mic, ma'am?
My name's Priscilla Wallace.
And your address, please?
Two twenty River Hill Club Lane, number twelve. And I'm actually an out-of-town owner. I came down to Kerrville about three months ago with the intention of setting the place up and for a short-term rental and I, it's three months later because I love Kerrville. So I have every intention in the world of coming back, however, I don't live here now. So I've made arrangements with local property and contacted cleaning people that take care of it and, and also screen and vet the people that are being by, by a management company.
So you have a management company that will be taking care of it, okay. And they will, of course, have the number and, and, yes. And I believe there are some other short-term rentals there, so you're not the only one.
Although I have spoken to neighbors and.
Okay, that's good, thank you, thank you.
Absolutely.
All right, Council, any questions for her?
We go back to the image on the, where it showed the parking as well. I guess a question for both the applicant or Mr. Paxton. How is the parking divided amongst the other buildings there? Like, do you get a certain number of designated spots? And how's that gonna work just to make sure that the other people don't take up the parking that's required?
That's absolutely understood. There are two assigned and then there are also four that are, are right.
Like a general type?
But they're just right outside my window.
Okay.
And I've been the only one parking there for the last three months because it's just easier to get into rather than using my own two spaces. And I have two others assigned as well.
Okay, the four are these, the ones that are kind of on, right on the street off of Fairway Drive?
Public use.
Those right there?
I think she's saying that these. Yes.
It, it is? Could you use the, the mouse, cause I don't, I'm trying to figure out.
I'm, I'm sorry.
We're talking about the four parking spaces. right there where your mouse is?
Yeah.
Oh, those, oh.
Are those the four you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so those are four right there, and then you have two designated-
Correct.
For your, okay.
Correct. The two designated are in the parking lot. And those four, like I said, honestly, I've been there three months, and I've been the only one parking there, so, so they're-
Okay, I was just confused about how that was handled, so, I appreciate you clarifying that, thank you, it's all my questions.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
So at six fifty, we will open the public hearing, do we have anyone to speak? At six fifty, we will close the public hearing, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
You guys, no one else will. I didn't have it up, sorry, Ben.
I'll make a motion.
Do we have a second?
To approve resolution number thirty-three dash twenty-two, thank you.
Second? All in favor, raise your right hand, and it is approved, thank you. All right, uh, six A, Shelley, if you'll read that in for us?
A two dash twenty, second reading, an ordinance in many chapter sixty of the code of ordinances, city of Kerrville, Texas, by changing the zoning of an approximate seven point zero eight acre property known as sixteen hundred Junction Highway, State Highway twenty-seven, consisting of part of lot one, block one of the Foxworth Galbraith subdivision from a light commercial zoning district C two to a general commercial zoning district C three and providing other matters relating to the subject there. Um, is one citizen speaker sign up, he's the owner.
Okay. Uh, Drew, do you have anything you want to say to us since it's on this second reading?
Second reading, nothing.
All right. Uh, does the applicant, uh, wanna say a few words?
Good evening, mayor, council members, uh, I really don't have anything to say, I think you've heard it before, don't wanna bore you, uh, so I'm just here to answer any questions you may have.
Only question I have is, is this process, um, I know we've approved, we've got, we've got one that's completely approved, we have one that's, that's more recently approved, and then congratulations, we're excited about this. Uh, but I am curious about the timing, because I haven't seen anything go vertical yet on, on any of the-
So the timing this year, this won't surprise you, the timing this year for all the projects is sort of off. The, uh, the project that's on, I think it's on Lehman, that was the last one you approved, that and almost every other project that came in, in twenty twenty, I think was the year, is asking T D H C A for additional tax credits to help, uh, uh, address the budget shortcomings everybody's having. Everybody's seeing shortfalls of thirty to forty percent, uh, of budget busts. So none of the projects are proceeding as you would hope they would. Uh, in terms of our particular project, uh, we are on the agenda on Thursday at T D H C A. Uh, the staff sends a list to T D H C A board of recommended projects, we're on that list. The board will not take action on Thursday, but will take action in late July, and at that point, hopefully, they'll approve it. Uh, a month later, we'll get a commitment letter from T D H C staff, and at that point, we'll start the design process, we'll be coming back and talking to you and the staff about traffic, parking in particular, those sorts of things. Uh, I'm hoping that some of the economic conditions we're seeing in the market soften between now and the end of the year. Ideally, we'd like to start construction late spring next year. Uh, but with the market conditions, everything's off. We've got three projects that got approved last year, none of which we can close on, 'cause we can't finance them right now. Uh, so we're in the same position with everybody else, everybody else is probably looking at six-month to twelve-month delays. I hope, knock on wood, that this project will not have that kind of delay.
Anyone else, Roman, Joe, Brandon? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, uh, do we have a motion?
I move that we approve ordinance number twenty, twenty-two dash twenty on the second reading.
And I'll second.
All right.
Just because we were ashamed in the beginning.
All right, everyone in favor, right hand, please. Thank you, and it is approved.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
You are welcome. You've been making a lot of trips to see us here, so-
You know, if I have to drive a long way to come see people, it's nice to come see you.
Appreciate that.
All right, Shelley, will you read it, six B?
May twenty-two dash twenty-one, second reading, an ordinance in many chapter sixty of the code of ordinances, city of Kerrville, Texas, by changing the zoning of a property known as four hundred Westwater, consisting of lot eight, block seventeen, section B of the Westland Place Edition, from a single-family residential with accessory dwelling unit zoning district R one A to a residential transition zoning district R T and providing other matters relating to the subject. There are no citizen speakers signed up.
All right. Drew, anything for us? All right, is, uh, the applicant here?
Yep.
Would you like to step to the mic and say a couple words?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Uh, my name is Gary Hatch, four oh eight Overlook Drive. I've, I was here at the last meeting, uh, uh, my family owns the business across the street, and they're looking forward to moving in to this place, just about got it paid for, and, uh, the only alterations that, uh, we are, have been told that we have to do is to put parking in the, in the backyard, and, uh, we have enough room for that. And put a ramp in and meet the sign of ordinance, so, any questions?
All right, anybody have a question for him?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, do we have a motion?
I move that we approve ordinance number twenty, twenty-two dash twenty-one on second reading.
Second reading, we have a second?
Second.
Yay, all right, everyone in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you, and it is approved. All right, you realize we did that in under a half hour?
An hour.
Well, under, yes, but we did all of these under a half hour.
Okay, all right, I give you credit for that.
Okay, uh, seven A appointments to the Economic Improvement Corporation, eligible for executive session, and what is your pleasure?
I would like to move the, I would like to make a recommendation that we move into executive session under item five five one point oh seven four to discuss the Economic Improvement Corporation appointments.
Do we have a second, all right, all in favor, raise your right hand, and it is approved. And we will move into executive session, and at this time, at six fifty-seven.
Wait, do we, do we go in up?
Let's go up. So we'll be back when we're back? All right, we will close the executive session at seven ten, and we will open the regular meeting at seven ten. And do we have a motion?
Mayor, uh, it's my honor to nominate three new board members, well, three appointees to the E I C board. Uh, we were blessed with excellent, uh, applicants, and it was a tough decision. And I'd like to nominate John Anderson, Gary Cochran as a reappointment, and Kyle Bond.
I will second that.
We have a second?
Yes.
All right, everyone in favor, please raise your right hand. Opposed? And it is approved.
The applicants are here, it looks like.
Uh, let's see, one applicant is here, one applicant is here?
Thank you.
Congratulations, thank you, we look forward to having you serve.
Get to work.
All right, at this time, do we have any items for future agendas?
I think they could have missed us on the twenty eighth anyway, so.
Yeah, we gotta know. The only thing I would like to bring up, and I think maybe, maybe chief, you're, you're working on this, is, uh, to do a safety, uh, not a safety, a traffic study on River Hill Boulevard. Is there one underway at, at the moment?
You, you recall, you, you all, uh, brought that up, uh, in the past, and we, that is on our radar.
It's on the radar, okay.
We do have that, we, uh, uh, we'll need to conduct that in the fall at the earliest, uh, because when school's back in session, uh, for that to be accurate, but that, that, that is on our radar.
Okay, so we're not doing one now to compare it to the fall?
We, uh, we ran a preliminary, uh, s- study, uh, last week for ten days, uh,
Oh, okay.
Moving through, we just got those results, uh, we haven't really had an opportunity to look through that yet. Uh, but it, it definitely wouldn't be as accurate as the, the study that-
Yes, but it gives us something, a little something to compare to.
That's right.
All right, very good, thank you. Uh, anyone else? All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do we have a second? Thank you, Joe, you're, you're catching on here, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, and all in favor? Raise your right hand, we are adjourned at seven twelve.